Good evening. I'd like to call a Lawrence City Council meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, March 19th. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Vasquez.
Here.
Counsel LaPlante.
Here.
Counsel Tumi.
Here.
Counsel Reyes.
Present.
Counsel Monte. Counsel Kino.
Present.
Counsel Brannan.
Present.
Counsel Vice President Rivera.
Present.
And Counsel President Murray.
Here. Please rise for a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Counselor, first item on the agenda is acceptance of the minute for March 5th. I need a motion to approve.
Some more?
You have a second and a discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, it's having. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Participant, you have two and a half minutes to state your comments. After two minutes, the bell will ring. You have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. Please address the city council as a whole, not as individual. First participant, Jonas Stunza. Name and address for the record, please Jonas.
Good evening. My name is Jonas Stunza, 37 Brew Street, Lawrence, and I am Chairman of the Lawrence Historical Commission. I'm presenting a thought that we had at our meeting last night of the Lawrence Historical Commission. An important point of the commission is that we would like to clarify for the record. Dear City Council members and fellow citizens of the city of Lawrence, it is it is through our commission and by the approval of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, with provided information and historical data that the North Common was declared a historical district, including its peripheral structures, and recognized as a historical district under Chapter 40(c), Section 3. As each phase of the reconstruction of the common has been continuing, this has been by state and federal monies. Over a million, $500,000 has been spent, but there is a stipulation that with that no intent of harm would be done to the properties. The large rides that are used as carnivals are counterproductive to the land and also is destructive to the trees and its pathways. Large machinery like this is also not allowed by an ordinance which was passed by the city council. The development of this parcel of land of 17 acres was done by Charles Sturro, one of the greatest 19th century engineers, and Frederick Olmsted as advisor, who was one of the patriarch of urban planning in the United States. He has done Central Park, the urban walkway in Boston, and he also helped to proceed in the draining of the North Common and its creating as a passive recreational site for an dense populated urban site. We are stewards of this land. We've received it from previous generations, and we are the protectors for future generations. We, as the commissioners of the Lawrence Historical Commission, call on all concerned members of the community to come together for the development of a larger bandstand, which would be later developed into a pavilion on Pemberton Park. This would create facilities that would be utilized at that site for such organizations as Hispanic Week and anyone else who would like to utilize that property. To create a superior project on that site, which would be for the better input of all the concerned citizens, we, the commissioners of the Commonwealth of Florence-
Thank you Jonas.
-come together to work together on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, H. Mali.
H. Mali, 53 Chester Street. Good evening, honorable member of the Lawrence City Council. In this exciting election year of 2013, our citizen can see how our city is moving forward. With honorable leadership of the Chief Romero, Lawrence, the police department has improved the quality of our life. The crime rate has declined 19 percent. Auto theft has declined 33 percent. We demand support of our police department and the union. Do not touch their budget. The Crime Prevention Unit, Community Policing, has been important to our city. Our citizens are witnessing that best performance of our DPW in the best stormiest year of the year. The workers and their leadership has been able to open new bridges, and the new trash collection policy has made our city more beautiful. We demand support of our DPW worker and remind you in this upcoming year, they have negotiation and the union negotiation is ongoing. Our firefighters are working without a contract. We demand support of our firefighters in the negotiation. Support our firefighter and brother team at Wood, regardless you are representing District E or F or at large. Honorable Mayor Lantigo has worked hard to open new fire station and provide new equipment for the firefighters. Honorable Mayor Lantigo brought to our children the gift of the turnaround plan. Harold Scholar Superintendent Rally has done lots of good stuff for our children. Our teachers and their union must know our citizens are behind them, and they are most important to our turnaround plan. Let's work together in this election year, make Lawrence a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Dick Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell. Live at 34 Cross Street, Lawrence. I was gonna make a very short statement, but I got other issues. I just can't make the statement I wanted to. The reason why is on March 7th of this year, I attended an ordinance committee meeting for another issue when I witnessed one of the two worst political stunts I've seen in this chamber. This one, my humble opinion ranks right up there with the mayor's railroading of you and the licensing board fiasco last December. I saw members of the ordinance committee attempt to browbeat Chief Romero over the possible elimination of the deputy chief's police position. Members of the committee tried to make it look like it was a personal issue while the chief said it was based on the lack of personnel. It appears to me that some members of the council have been spending too much time watching the old Politics Channel reruns of the antics of Tommy McGee, George Caverian, Charlie Flaherty, Tommy Fineran, and Sal DeMacy, where these individuals pretty much controlled what happened or didn't happen according to their wishes, whims, or direction that the political wind was blowing. In three and a half months, it'll be the 150th anniversary of the Gettysburg Address. Some of us here might remember having to memorize that in a history course in high school. From that speech came a phrase, "That government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth." After witnessing what transpired on March 7th, it's obvious to me that the phrase has been rewritten to, "The government of politicians, by politicians, and for politicians shall inherit the earth." In about six months, a lot of you will be running for reelection. I wish you a lot of luck with the following caveat. Just remember, every voter in the city of Lawrence has input into four seats on this council, three at large seats and one district council. If I'm not mistaken, that makes you councilors beholden to the voters and not to various people in this building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next participant, Kathy Runge. Name and address for the record, please Kathy.
Kathy Runge, 32 Drackett Street. I just have a couple really short things I wanted to mention about the budget that's coming up. First off, you know, now would be the time to go through all the offices in this city and look for temporary workers, so whenever you see an added position in the next, the new budget, and you say, "Well, we don't need that position," you're not, you know, you're prepared when the mayor says you're laying somebody off because there's already somebody there. And, you know, I just want to say, you have to be prepared to do that sometimes if there's a position that isn't necessary. And secondly, I know I said this last year, but when I looked at, for instance, the city of Lowell's budget, they had like the three years, they had the actual amount spent. Like this year, they'll have the actual amount spent in FY12, the budgeted amount for FY13, and the proposed budget for FY14. And I just don't see how you could even judge the budget, or at least the general public, with just that information. How can we even make an informed guess, you know, about what you should do with the budget? And, you know, I think that's information that should be available to the public, and it's obviously public record. And it would be, I'm just, so I'd just like to request again that they think about putting that information, the actual number spent in FY12, on the submitted budget when they submit it to you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, one of our own, Counsel LaPlante.
Thank you very much, Council President. I rise today to talk about the most recent ordinance committee meeting, where document 282-12, which was to eliminate the deputy police chief ordinance, was discussed, debated, and made a motion for it to be tabled. My sense is that I would like to see that moved. It doesn't make a difference to me if it's moved favorably, unfavorably, recommended, not recommended, but I think it's important that we, as a city council, have an opportunity to take a vote on this, because right now, we're unable to have that item moved out of the committee. That's been there since October. We've had four, the committee had four meetings on it, had plenty of time to ask questions. Information was asked of the police chief. He gave it in writing, came back and spoke in person. All the information was there, and at this point, it needs to be taken up here at the full council level. And we can debate the merits of it at this level, but I think to leave it at that level, I think does a disservice to the process that we're here. I've never known this council to be one to be afraid of taking a vote, or never been one to not allow the process to go forward with votes being taken. So I'm gonna ask that we go ahead and move that document out of the ordinance committee to the full council. Today, I'm gonna be looking to articulate Rule Number 11, which is called the Suspension of the Rules. When I make the motion, it's very simple. This motion, what it will do is discharge from the committee this item to the full council. That's all it does. The rule itself says the following, "No committee shall be discharged of a matter pending before that committee unless six or more members of the council consent thereto." So we do, as this board, as this full council, have the ability, but we do need six votes. So I'd like to make a motion to utilize Rule Number 11 to take out Document Number 282-12 from the ordinance committee.
Well, you're currently in public participation, so if you want to make that during a different area of the agenda, then we'll do that. But at this point, I'm just listening to the public. And you're speaking as a public person, not as a elected official.
Though I'd like to do this, is suspend the rest of my time. I think this is the last one. I'm the last person to speak.
Oh, there's another person.
Oh, there's one more. With all due respect, then I will wait until the other individual has a chance to speak, and then I will ask to be recognized for that motion.
Sure. Next participant, Ed Starr. Name and address for the record, please Ed.
Good evening. My name's Ed Starr. I'm the business manager of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 2321. I represent all the Verizon workers in the Merrimack Valley in North Shore, 43 communities. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight here. It seems you have a lot of very important city issues to deal with, but I felt compelled to come in front of every town in the Merrimack Valley and North Shore to speak to the city through the town councils, city councils, and so forth. As I said, I represent the Verizon workers. We have a center in Andover, Mass, which handles all of the repair calls. So if your phone line goes out, your files line goes out, those calls go into Andover. They have for the last 45 years. They've been based in the Merrimack Valley. Verizon announced two months ago to the unions and to the workers that they're moving 140 jobs out of state to Rhode Island. The work has been done here in the valley, servicing Massachusetts constituents for 45 years. The reason I'm coming here is this is not only wrong because we negotiated a new contract. I was away for 16 months negotiating the last Verizon contract, and we were able to secure jobs. They haven't hired in this company in a long time. They've been laying off. You go in, there was, I used to work in the Lawrence garage servicing, fixing the phones in Lawrence, and they moved that garage to Methuen. So they've been consolidating for years, but they never move people 85 miles from center to center. What we have is a bipartisan support, starting at the federal level. The whole federal congressional delegation has asked Verizon, "Keep these jobs in Massachusetts." We just negotiated 25 new jobs for people here would have, maybe have an opportunity to work in the area that they live. Those jobs that we got are gonna go down to Rhode Island, so we haven't added any new jobs. Legally, we're fighting it arbitration-wise, but who knows, you know, how the contract works on that, but Verizon's made this decision. We have, the whole federal delegation has signed a letter asking them not to hardship these workers. Many of them live in the whole Merrimack Valley, Lawrence, and so forth. Is that my time?
You have 30 more seconds.
Okay, I'm sorry. So what we're coming to do is ask you to adopt a resolution. Bill Ricka, Lowell, Methuen last night, and we're going through the whole valley and the whole North Shore, to support these workers, to support keeping Massachusetts jobs in Massachusetts. I believe you have a copy of resolution in the talking points, and all the federal and state politicians, Secretary of State, Secretary of Treasurer, and everybody else that has signed on, just asking Verizon to do the right thing morally and ethically for these people. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Counsel LaPlante, I'm gonna have your item. Probably will pick it up somewhere in the committee reports. I just, we got other stuff here.
Okay, that's fine.
That ends public participation. These names will be submitted to the clerk's office to be archived. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. Document 346-12, Handicap Parking, 177 Salem Street. This item, actually, Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 346-2012, notice is hereby given to the city council, hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 19th, in City Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, at 7:00 p.m. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to revise ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by adding a new paragraph to Section 1036340 of the Code. Handicap parking to be inserted in proper order, Salem Street, north side from .50 feet easterly of the intersection of Market Street to .70 feet easterly of the intersection of Market Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March 8th.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to be heard? No? Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, where's your pledge?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Counsel Tumi.
Basically, the, in the paperwork, it shows a picture of the disabled person's identification. It says expires 10/11/13. Is that an automatic thing?
No, she has to come back with a renewal.
Pardon me?
She has to come back with a renewal.
With a renewal?
Yeah.
So if it goes past 10/11/13, and she doesn't come back?
Well, actually, once she passes it and you put the sign up, anybody can park there. Anybody with a handicap placard can park there. It's not just designated to her, anybody. Even though it's in front of a property, anybody has a placard can park there. So it's not designated just for this individual.
Well, what I'm concerned about is-
Well, this is what will happen, if she doesn't have one, and she parks in front of it, she's gonna get taken. Old token.
Well, what I'm asking is, what happens to that placard after the 13th?
It expires.
It expires.
And then she needs to get a new one.
She needs to get a new one. And if she doesn't, then they see it hanging there, and so with that-
The sign will still be up.
No, but I mean her.
Her, she won't be able to park there without the placard. No.
Okay.
She won't be able to park there without the placard. Anybody else?
So motion has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, it's having. Next item on the agenda is document 347-12, Handicap Parking. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 347-2012, notice is hereby given to the city council, hold a public hearing Tuesday, March 19th, in City Council Chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to revise ordinances for the city of Lawrence by adding a following new paragraph to 1036340, Handicap Parking, Salem Street, south side from .115 feet easterly of the intersection of Loring Street to .135 feet easterly of the intersection of Loring Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published March 8th.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to be heard? No? Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, where's your pledge?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel LaPlante?
Is the constituent, or is that individual here tonight?
We usually don't ask people to come when they handicap because it's a mobility issue.
All right, says nobody here from, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? So motion has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, it's having. Next item on the agenda is document 7-13, Handicap Drop Off Parking Space, Loading Zone in front of 320 Essex Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 7-2013, notice is hereby given to the city council, hold a public hearing Tuesday, March 19th, in City Council Chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to revise ordinances, to be amended by adding a following new paragraph to 1036330 subsection c of the municipal code, to be inserted in proper order. Essex Street, south side from .160 feet easterly of the intersection of Lawrence Street to .180 feet easterly of the intersection of Lawrence Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published March 8th.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
Eric Hamilton, representing Lawrence Medical Center. Good evening, councilors. Just here to ask your consideration for a favorable vote for this recommendation. We went through the process with the ordinance committee, provided all the proper information, and we are expecting six or seven people to go to work immediately when we open the center, probably within a week, and we're looking to hire as many as 20 people before the end of the year. So we believe this is a positive thing for the city of Lawrence, and we wish that you'd give it your consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions if the council has any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, where's your pledge?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, it's having. Next item on the agenda is document 36-13, Appropriation Transfer from Free Cash for Police Department Equipment for $15,000. Mr. Clerk, let's read the notice.
Document 36 of 2013, notice is hereby given to the city council, hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 19th, in City Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Mass, at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning approval of the proposed appropriation and the amount of $15,000 to be taken from free cash reserves to deposit to general funds to supplement police department equipment in order to allow the Lawrence Police Department to purchase high-powered rifles for its equipment. A copy of all documents and information concerning proposed appropriation were made available for viewing, copying, and inspection in the office of city clerk, 200 Common Street, during business hours, 8:30 to 4:30 p.m. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March 8th.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
Hawaiian Valley, 53 Chester Street. As a long-term citizen of the city, I strongly encourage in this important election year that you vote yes. Any help you can give for our police department in this year is very important, even if it's symbolic and shows your attention to quality of our life, and you know that the police department and the union has been working very hard with only 110 police officers in our city. So I respectfully request of you in this election year, the vote yes for this appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Name and address for the record, please.
Mark Gray, Fort Plushway. I talked before on this. There still hasn't been any ballistical data, any tactical information that's come down that you have in front of you that would support any position differed from what I gave you as far as testimony goes. The testimony you received from the police chief had zero tactical and ballistical testimony to it. He resorted to scare tactics and mentioned three specific items or events. One of them was the tragedy in Connecticut, and briefly on that, had a first responder, which is the language that the police chief is using, showed up to that situation armed with a tank, with missiles, with a button that would have disintegrated the individual with a satellite in outer space. It would have not prevented what happened. The individual shot himself with the gun, and that was the end of it. First responders were out of it. So I add zero relevance. What is relevant is that it was used as an example in front of you. It was relevant to me because a police officer driving by the Breen School here in Lawrence could easily walk in and say, "Why are your doors open for so many hours out of the day?" If you've ever driven by the Breen School, and I've had several complaints on this, the front door and the side doors are open hours on in. I've actually stood out in front of it and watched it. And I think that goes a little bit to an argument that the police should be having on prevention. The second one was the Colorado shooting, and I think the police did a great job. They actually broke a policy in transporting people with their own vehicles. I thought that was outstanding. The individual was apprehended within six minutes without incident behind the theater. Nothing that the police officers could have had, despite all this guy brought into the theater, would have done anything. It was over and done with. The individual's apprehended without incident. The third situation that was mentioned was the Donner Incident in California, where decades-old police tactics of setting up a perimeter around the individual worked, although they ended it a little differently than they usually did. What was significant about that event was that not one incident, but two different incidents, civilians were actually shot at. One time, a 71-year-old woman and a 47-year-old woman in a vehicle that did not match color and model were shot at, and I believe it was over 47 times bullets impacted their vehicle. That's a case not to have high-powered weapons at the ready. There were other incidences where people were being shot at by the police, and in that incidence, thank God, they didn't have high-powered weapons. There's also, none of the information in front of you states, you know, what we call nomenclature of a weapon. It's what it is, the specifics to the weapon, the rifling, the training involved, cold weather versus warm weather, the rifling, the bullets have, you know, is part of the weapon system. You don't have anything in front of you. If it's being used against personnel with bulletproof vests, are they using armored piercing rounds? Are they using a heavy caliber round? If so, you need a rifling that differs according to the grams of the round that you're using. And we're also talking about a weapon system. You know, I have hands-on training with this type of weapon. For me, it was the M16, which is a very similar type weapon. When I ended, the year that I ended in the Marines, I put 10 rounds rapid-fire through a three-inch circle at 300 meters. I like the weapon. It is not a weapon for this environment. So I'm telling you, as someone who did 20 hours of training that the police chief referred to, I used to get that in a week. I was very familiar with the weapon system. I'm very familiar with the problems when you're dealing with things like optics and how that bounces around in a vehicle, as opposed to iron sights, as opposed to fix sights. There's a lot of different things that is not in front of you. A lot of things that should be in front of you if you're gonna consider something like this. And where in the city are you gonna have the luxury of being a first responder and claiming 300 meters' worth of yardage? It doesn't, it doesn't happen. And you don't have that luxury as a first responder. You have to deal with whatever it is you're given. I can tell you, as someone that's from handguns to artillery-trained, if I was a drug dealer and I was going up against the cops, and I had to choose between ones armed with the AR-15s or armed with a 45-caliber pistol, I would want to go up against the guy with the AR-15. A little bit of history on that, when this type of weapon was put on the battlefield, the Viet Cong used to wrap themselves in bandages. When they went out in human waves, they pre-bandaged themselves because this- out in human waves, they pre-bandaged themselves because this type of weapon would go straight through, and they could continue on and engage in the battle and run right up into the American forces. It's not a weapon system that's going to put you down. And that's why I alluded to the fact that other law enforcement in other areas like the heavy caliber weapon systems. When the nine-millimeter became popular and the police departments first initiated usage of them, it was the people that went up against the drug criminals and activities that got rid of it and went back to the heavier caliber weapons because it just, it didn't work unless you hit a vital organ or an artery. It wasn't putting them down, and they were continuing to fight and continuing to fire. So, you know, I do think something like this needs debate, which is why I'm glad I was able to talk on it. It does need a little bit of expertise when you're talking about putting weapons on the streets of Lawrence. I was glad I could talk about it. And, you know, the fact that the police chief didn't provide the information and didn't give you, you know, the straightforward testimony that I am, I'm a little concerned about that. I'm a little concerned that he used those incidents to try and scare you. He got visibly upset with you for asking questions about why we are questioning this. That's a little bit troublesome to me because in the end, we're the ones that decide these things. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to approve the matter.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Counselor Rivera.
Yeah, I just want to, we had this item before the Budget and Finance Committee to make sure that we had the funds possible to do that. We had some testimony from the chief there about the need for these things. I just want to be clear that, you know, we, this chief spoke at the subcommittee, spoke at the last meeting we had, but we had, you know, no expert has spoken here this evening. So I would take everybody's testimony on this matter with a grain of salt. I too am a veteran, and I too have familiarity with some of these weapon systems, and the reality is, I've never spent a day as a police officer on the streets of Lawrence. So I don't have a real good perspective on that matter. So I'm going to take the chief's word on this one, and the men and women who go out there and defend us every day, if they say they need this system for now, I'll take their word on it. Just like everything else that we give authority to people in this community, they abuse or misuse that authority, we'll take it away. But I think right now we're being asked for a specific tool for a specific need. I just don't want, I did not want it to go without being said that no experts spoke here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Some motion at the table. Counselor Toomey?
Yes, at the subcommittee level, I believe this was sent up without a recommendation because the chief was not at the meeting to answer any questions. So he is here this evening, and if councilors have a question, I would like to give him the opportunity to answer any of these questions.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor LaPlante?
I see that Mr. Iannello's here. I've got to ask you a budget question for him.
Sure. Mr. Iannello?
Yes, Counselor.
Evening, Mr. Iannello. So this is an appropriation transfer for fifteen thousand dollars from free cash to general fund to purchase these weapon systems. I know the answer, but I want you to hear it. I've been asking this several times tonight. Can that fifteen thousand dollars be spent to either hire more individuals to the police department or and/or hire more fire personnel?
No, this fifteen thousand would be specific to this council order, to purchase the police rifles for the police department.
I get that. Even if we wanted to, could we take any of this free cash and spend it on police personnel or fire department personnel?
The balance of free cash, I mean, not this particular order, but any free cash amount.
Including this or any free cash amount. Can we use this? I mean, some people saying we got to put our money toward hiring police officers and firefighters. This is fifteen thousand dollars that are not going to either one of those for personnel. Could we, can we use that money to get more personnel?
Free cash can be used for any legal purpose, but it wouldn't be recommended.
That's not the answer I expected. I was under the, I was under the strong opinion, or at least impression, that we were not able to use that money for personnel costs.
No, there's nothing prohibiting us from using that for any legal purpose for which a municipality may expend funds. However, it's not, these are the city's only reserves, and it would not be wise or prudent, and I certainly wouldn't recommend spending our reserves on continuing costs that we're not able to fund in the following year.
Point and inquiry, can I just take a quick question?
Point and inquiry, Counselor Benau.
With regard to that same personnel issue, my understanding was that with the new fiscal year, if we, the free cash is available in this fiscal year, and if we use it on personnel, we could fund somebody for a few weeks or months, it'll get us to June thirtieth, but we're going to have the same problem all over again in July, and we won't have the funding. And that's why you could technically use it for that short window, but you're going to create that whole layoff situation that we've been trying to avoid. If we bring anybody on, we would not have matching funds or any funds come July one, and that's why you wouldn't use it for personnel. Is that...
Exactly, and that's one of the, one of the items that the ratings agencies will take a look at, how are we using our reserves, and if we're using them for, they should be targeted for one-time type events, not continuing operations.
Have you talked to Overseer Nunes about the use of the free cash?
Yes.
And have you even talked to him about using any of the free cash, including this fifteen thousand or other monies for the use of personnel? And what was his response if you did?
We've, you know, obviously Bob has the same opinion that I have. The overseer has the same opinion I have, that free cash should only be used for one-time type events or purposes, not for operating, continuing operations.
So even if this council had decided that this was not, this or any other free cash expenditure would be better used for personnel matters, that probably would not get through either you or the overseer. Is that true?
The, it wouldn't be my recommendation, but I don't have the power of the fiscal overseer. The fiscal overseer has to approve all transfers from the city. So if the city council were to approve a transfer for whatever reason, the fiscal overseer has the final say as to whether that transfer is made.
Thank you. I'm all set with that, and I just want to take up my, counsel to my rights, his offer, as he, the police chief is here. I am interested in hearing any kind of rebuttal he may have to the earlier testimony that was provided to by the former school committee member. I'd be curious to get his take on that.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Regarding, I don't have a rebuttal. If you have a question regarding something that was said, I can answer it. I also have Sergeant Robert Di Benedetto. He's a department armor and one of the seven certified firearms instructors for the department, state certified. If you have a question regarding it, anything that might have been said that you want clarified, I'm here to answer the questions.
One of the allegations was that you were using a motion to try to convey to us that, that this is the reason why we should have it, that in fact, there were three or two or three different kinds of significant events that have taken place, and that we need to use these, we need to have on our disposal these rifles to be able to better defend our citizens. And one of the things that struck me during that discussion was the fact that the, that the bullets were so intense and so significantly, I guess, dense or powerful, they could actually rip through and not even have the deterrent effect they were looking for. What's your reaction to that, and is that last point true, in your opinion?
High-powered bullets tend to fragment inside the person, not likely to go through, more so than the handgun bullet. We talked about the capabilities of the handgun as opposed to rifle. If you remember last time, handgun capability is at twenty-five yards. The rifle's at five hundred. We mentioned the different things that have happened throughout the country because in those instances, those individuals were armed with that AR-15. And let me explain, we have these rifles now, and officers go on patrol with them. People on the SWAT unit currently can go out with the rifle. What we're saying, we want to buy more. We want to make sure our officers are equipped, whether it's the school resource officers, whether it's the officers of community policing, whether it's patrol officers. Because in the event we have an incident, they're going to be the first one to arrive on the scene. It's not going to be the SWAT team, it's going to be the officer. And we just want to ensure that when all the officers arrive at those situations, that they have the proper equipment, equipment that we currently have, but obviously we need to purchase more in order to put them in the cars.
One of the points as well that was made was that there are very few communities that have these kinds of rifles at their disposal for the police department. Can you speak to whether or not we're going to be on the vanguard, on the cutting edge of having our police officers with that readiness, or is this a common practice in the area?
I think we're the only ones that don't have in a car. Am I correct, Bob? Surrounding towns have, yeah.
Surrounding towns, I mean Methuen, North Andover, Andover.
I think we're one of the only ones that don't have it. And again, we do have it, but in some cars, for the officers who are qualified on it. And the other thing, somebody mentioned the last meeting, nobody's going to be given a rifle, have in that cruiser unless that person is certified, has been trained to shoot it, has qualified. We qualify with all our weapons. And again, these are weapons that we currently have, but we need to purchase more.
Is there any concern at all, or what kind of safeguards are there so that if an officer goes out of this cruiser to do some action, that somebody else can't go into the cruiser and take that rifle out?
I don't want to get into how those weapons are locked in there. It's not a key, but it is, it is a lock premise that you're not going to get it out.
Thank you. Counselor Benau?
Thanks, Council President. I just want to thank the chief for being here tonight. He was here on March fifth. He spoke at length, even though that wasn't the public hearing. I felt like I got the information that I needed on March fifth, so I'm grateful that you're here again, though. I do support this motion. If the chief knows what he needs for his department, I feel like if he says the department needs this tool, I do support the motion, and I appreciate you being here two times in a row.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Please, Ms. Counsel Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see that we have a quote from two different companies here for the purchase of these two items. The quote that we were given adds to twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. It is being asked for fifteen thousand. I would personally like to amend the motion to provide them with that amount specific that they need, based on the quote that we were given. And the reason being is because we have more appropriation transfer from our free cash account, and I think that we have to become a little bit more conservative when it comes to the expenditure. Two thousand dollars here, two thousand dollars there is going to add up. I don't know how the budget and finance director feels about that, but I know that we have two more items that are coming up with much bigger numbers, and it is important for us to look for every single penny that we're representing for the constituents. So I would like to suggest that friendly amendment.
The call was for the rifles. There are accessories that have to go on their sights and different things that they needed. That's what brought it up to the fifteen thousand dollars. It's not, it's not that we lowballed. The rifles cost a certain amount, but they have to be some modifications on them as well with sights and things like that, and that's what the total cost was, fifteen thousand.
So that is in addition to the two quotes that we have?
Well, I think the rifles were twelve thousand five, and then there was additional cost, and it added up to fifteen thousand, the total package for the rifles.
No, because the first quote, it's for twelve, I mean, ten thousand seven hundred ninety-five. Then the second quote is for one thousand six hundred and sixty. If you add both of them, it's going to equal twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-five. So I think that that's including what you're suggesting.
Yeah. That includes gun racks and equipment that needed to secure the rifles and things. The total cost is fifteen thousand.
Well, if I add up the gun rack and the installed gun rack, which is a thousand six hundred and sixty, plus the rifles itself, which is ten thousand seven hundred and ninety...
Right, but then it's two thousand five hundred and forty-five for the accessories.
Point of information, Counselor Rivera.
Thank you. I think that the matter at hand is that there's twenty-five hundred and forty-five dollars that's not being accounted for, and I think that if we can get that accounted for, that may make it a little bit easier for us to understand. Because when we don't get numbers that balance out, it looks like there's just this empty number out there.
I think the, the...
Two thousand five hundred dollars is a lot of money.
I agree. I think there was a couple of quotes that they did have at the time they submitted this request. They didn't have the quotes for the additional...
Right, the magazines, the light, the lights on them, things like that. The total cost was to equip the rifle, the entire rifle the way we needed it, was two thousand, was fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand dollars.
So that had been...
We submitted the information we had at the time of the request. All we have are these two quotes, and then an estimate for what the additional amounts were. So I don't think he had a specific quote for it, or that was able to be submitted with the city council.
Do we have it now?
The city council. I don't know if he's...
I'd have to check with...
With the department. That's where the fifteen thousand came from.
Counsel Vasquez?
I think that, you know, I will still suggest with, that's what we have, that's what is accounted for, and when constituents come before us and ask us, where's every single penny of the city going to, what am I going to say? And I think that's just a start. We have big items coming before us, and I think we have to be very, very conservative with our free cash. We started this fiscal year with six point six million. We are below five million already, and it will keep reducing. Thank you.
Counsel Benau?
My one thought is, wouldn't it be a shame if we spent twelve thousand five hundred dollars to buy these rifles, and they didn't have the sights or whatever it is that they need, the scope or the, and we don't use them, and then we're waiting until the next fiscal year to be buying that additional part because we've got all the rifles in stock, and the guys are trained and ready to use them, and we're waiting for the next budget to get approved so that we can put that final piece on. If the chief is asking for the fifteen, I agree with the point that you're making, and Counselor Rivera, I think you're right. They should have updated this paperwork and got us more accurate numbers if the true number is a little higher.
It is quoted. We have two quotes through you, Mr. President. We have two quotes that have been given. One of them includes the gun rack and the installation of the gun rack.
Right.
And then the other quote, it's the specific rifles that we are counting for.
Right, but he's saying there's additional accessories, like the scopes or whatever it is, that have additional costs. Yes, we should have that paperwork in here. I absolutely agree with you, but just because the paperwork isn't in here, I am willing to still support the item at the amount he wants because I don't want to buy these guns and never be able to use them. Like, that would be...
Mr. Iannello, just a quick question. If we only use twelve five, what happens to remain in balance?
If we appropriate the fifteen thousand, the only amount that'll be used is the amount that is used to fund, to purchase the rifles as they need them. However, if the, any remaining balance in the account would just revert back or stay in that capital outlay, capital project fund, as to where we're going to transfer this, and it would not be expended.
What am I suggesting? Will be probably approved the fifteen thousand. You guys purchase the, whatever the amount is, the final amount is, and come back within two months or a month, whenever it is that you guys are, I mean, when are you purchasing these guns?
If I might...
If we approve it today?
These quotes are from January, so I'll have to defer to the police department as how long it will take them to order, and whether this quote was still good three months later.
Chief?
Chief, do you know?
Please, talking to the... Chief, when are you anticipating purchasing these guns?
I'm sorry?
When are you anticipating to purchase?
We can put in the purchase, depending on how long it takes us to get there. It could take a month, it could take two months to get. We don't know.
To get them?
It's up to the manufacturer, yeah.
Okay. So my personal opinion will be this, just an opinion. I think that we should look into it. Just approve the fifteen thousand, come back before us, whether it's a month or two months after you purchase the gun. Bring us the slip.
Exactly. What was spent on the weapons, absolutely.
Take a look at it, and, I mean, I'm sure we can transfer money from capital again. Once we earmark this money to purchase these guns, if there's twenty-five hundred dollars left, we can always transfer it back.
That's correct.
Okay. So we can do that.
Sure, absolutely.
Maybe that's something that we can do, that we can control.
If it's possible, Mr. President, could we divide this document in A and B, and that B will be update?
Well, you can always put it back next week on the agenda. Update on purchase of...
Okay.
Yeah. If you want, you can put a new item on the agenda. We'll table it at the Budget and Finance Committee, or if you want to do it up here, we can probably bring it up here and just, we could even invite the chief two months from now and just come in and give us an update.
All right.
And then we can always make the transfer.
But what about, it makes more sense, you know, just to approve tonight and let it, you know, do whatever they have to do and what you say. They always can come back in front of us and just show the slip. That's something that you think it can be possible?
Yeah, but through you, Mr. President, it is, it's definitely looking ahead. Right now, we're discussing two thousand five hundred dollars, but I'm looking down the road in the future. You know, we have items that are coming before us that are larger amount, and I think that, you know, if every time we request, we get... you know, if every time we request, we get a request for transfer, we're asking for a larger amount, because we don't have the data in front of us, it could become the norm, and, you know, $2,500 is not much today, but then it's just going to continue in the future. That's what I'm looking for. It's, and I understand, I think that approving it and making sure that the chief comes see for us and then gives a report, this is how much was spent, and then the director from the Budget and Finance, Mr. Ianello, comes back to us and says, yeah, it will be going back to the free cash account, I will feel more comfortable in that regard, because we have to account for every single penny in the city of Lawrence. So that is my primary concern.
One of the things you can do, we can probably amend your motion and add it to the motion. Whatever remaining balance is, it goes back to free cash. You can amend the motion, too, if you want.
I suggest that as a friendly amendment.
Accepted. Accept it. Any second?
Second.
Any more discussion? To the amendment? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, yes, have it. Next item on the agenda is Communication for Mayor, City Officials, City Attorneys. None. Appropriation orders resolution, document 54-13, appropriation, transfer from free cash to general fund, veterans benefit for $355,000. Item was submitted by Mark J. Ianello, Finance Director. This item came up from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chair, from the Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee, and it was sent up with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing.
Right here, second?
Second.
All those in favor to order a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yes, have it. Next item on the agenda is document 55-13, appropriation order. Authorization to borrow extraordinary repairs for the UMS school for $3 million. Item came up from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chair, from the Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee and was sent up to the full council. We... I want to take a moment in the report to say that we're being asked to spend $3 million. I would urge my fellow counselors to do the work they usually do, of finding out what this $3 million is being spent on. There should be information in your packet, to reach out to the school department, to also reach out to members of the committee, if you weren't there during the last committee meeting, to discuss this item, a very important, very important to the funds that we have in reserves and the use of those funds, because we sent this up with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, but we want to make sure that all counselors are prepared for that matter. Do that as a form of a motion.
Right here, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yes, have it. Next item on the agenda is our committee reports. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a resolution. Document 62-13, I almost skipped one. Resolution related to maintaining Verizon repair center jobs and innovative technological work in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I put this item on the agenda.
Counsel, I think you guys heard the previous speaker, Ed Starr. He is the gentleman that spoke in public participation in regards to keeping jobs here in the community and here in the state of Massachusetts. There's currently nine, I believe it's nine positions that are currently being shipped out to Rhode Island, and we want to make sure that we keep these jobs in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I wrote a quick resolution here with your information. I think we should all probably push state legislature and also push Verizon to try to maintain these jobs here in the community and here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that we really need, especially here in the city of Lawrence, with the high, we have one of the highest unemployment rates in the Commonwealth. And I think we should all support this resolution, and I want to thank you. Actually, I'm looking at the resolution, every single one of you sign it on behalf of the people of Verizon and the people that are in jeopardy of losing their jobs. I want to thank you for supporting this particular resolution. And it's a long resolution, I'm going to try to read it as quick as possible. And it says, and it states as follows, "We, the members of the Lawrence City Council for the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, hereby endorse and present a resolution related to maintaining Verizon repair center jobs and innovative technological work in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and hereby say it as follows. Whereas solutions to competitive demands on businesses in Massachusetts and throughout the United States and abroad often involve downsizing and outsourcing instead of protecting workers and their families. And whereas Massachusetts workers are without jobs, and some communities are particularly hard hit with the long-term unemployment. And whereas it is recognized that maintaining good jobs with good pay and benefits in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is encouraged of all businesses, ensuring working families employed in Massachusetts have job stability. And whereas Verizon Communications in Massachusetts has been and continue to downsize in their Massachusetts workforce and has not added any new technology-driven jobs in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Whereas Verizon Communications in Massachusetts has decided to relocate their two enhanced Verizon Repair Centers located in Andover, Massachusetts and Springfield, Massachusetts, out of state to our next-door Rhode Island state, forcing upon workers the options of unreasonable commute of hundreds of miles from their homes, moving out of state or ending their employment with Verizon. Whereas it is recognized that Verizon workers and their family will suffer extreme hardship, creating stressful family relationships, issues with childcare and elder care, marital discord, and the communities in which they live will be impacted as its employees determine whether to move out of state, to commute or commute hundreds of miles, or quit. And whereas it is recognized that Verizon Communications and hence Verizon Repair Center have been located in Massachusetts for over 40 years, servicing the Massachusetts residents. And be resolved that the city council of Lawrence, Massachusetts supports innovative jobs growth and retaining technology-driven jobs with good pay and benefits, and it strongly encourages Verizon Communications to continue to employ EVRC workers in Massachusetts, providing the same repair center services that have served the Commonwealth for over 40 years. And be resolved that the city council of Lawrence, Massachusetts, will provide a copy of this resolution to Verizon, and strongly encouraging Verizon to consider the impact of relocating these workers out of state and their families, the communities in which they live, and the economic growth and stability of the communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Wherefore, we, the members of the Lawrence City Council of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and throughout this resolution, hereby endorse and support maintaining Verizon repair center jobs and innovative technological work in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and constable seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed hereto this 19th date of March in the year 2013.
And on behalf of the Lawrence City Council, the people of Lawrence, we want to thank you for everything you're trying to do.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is committee report, document 292-12, operation of taxi and delivery vehicles in Lawrence. Authorization regulations. This item came up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair, from the ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. On March 7th, the ordinance committee met and reviewed this issue, and it came up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion. It's to order a public hearing. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Discussion. Counsel Laplante. I want to be clear, because we haven't yet this year, we haven't yet this year had a chance, I don't think, to go ahead and approve all the various licenses for all the taxicabs. Is that what this document is supposed to do?
No, this is the same, this is a document that we actually passed about three months ago, I believe, two or three months ago. And, four months ago?
December 4th.
December 4th. And the, there was a section of this particular regulations that we wanted to leave out, and we didn't. So what we did, we amended the motion, we went through, we amended the ordinance, we had information from the city attorney, we got him involved heavily on it, because we intend to help Lawrence cap companies that are operating in the city of Lawrence under Lawrence rules. And I think it's fair, it's not fair for, to have a company that is located outside of the city, bringing, you know, getting all the benefits from Laurentians when they don't have to obey by the rules of the city of Lawrence and the ordinance that we currently have, and the ordinance that we, the city council, put in place. And I think when you have outside companies, they're coming into the city, and they're trying to bypass or find a loophole in the ordinance, and it hurts our businesses in here, I think we really need to look seriously into helping the business in this community. And this is what we're doing in this particular ordinance. We're trying to delete a section to prevent these outside companies from taking business away from Lawrence companies. Anybody else? This motion on the table to order a public hearing has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yes, have it. Next item on the agenda is document 242A-12, Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, six-month moratorium. This item came up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair, before I hand it over to you, we had a conversation with the city attorney this morning, and this is just a pretty much like resolution. We don't have to order a public hearing. So we can vote on it today.
At the subcommittee level, we did have discussion when we got to the Medical Marijuana Treatment Center. The initial item was to create a zone for it, and the document has been split, and there still is a document at the subcommittee to create that zone. But in the meantime, we have the option under the state law to enact a moratorium, which would allow us extra time until the state law is issued. The state law regulations don't even come out until May 1, but municipalities have till May 1 to adopt their zone. So the state recognized the difficulty that it puts municipalities in, so they've allowed this option to enact a reasonable moratorium. So you can't have a moratorium forever, but you can have a moratorium for... The proposal was for six months after the day that the regulations come out. So it gives us a six-month window where we can't be challenged by someone who wants to put one of these facilities in. So that was the proposal. So this half of the document is just enacting that moratorium. It did go to the planning board. They also approved unanimously to adopt that moratorium, and the recommendation from the subcommittee was, again, to adopt that moratorium, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Right here, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Counsel Laplante.
Real quick, this is actually some timely information. Within the last five days or seven days, I think the state Supreme Court actually had a ruling. One was that the moratoriums are in order, and that the moratoriums can exist for at least a year. I think it even go beyond a year. So six months is fairly conservative, but certainly within our rights to go ahead and do that, number one. And number two, when we began the debate regarding the zoning, the Supreme Court, state Supreme Court also said that, in its opinion, said that a city or town could not prohibit that from being located in a municipality. So even though there may be some in the community who want to expressly prohibit it, the Supreme Court has already issued its opinion and judgment, saying that that would be unlawful and would not be permitted. So step one is for the moratorium. I hope that we all support it. And if we need more time, hypothetically, we certainly could ask for that if there needs to be at the end of the six-month period. Thank you.
Anybody else? This motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yes, have it. Next item on the agenda is document 27, proposed amendment to zoning ordinance, rezoning 84 East Haver Street from R2 residential zone to a B1 local business zone. Mr., this item came up from the ordinance committee to order a public hearing. Madam Chair, from the ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. Again, with where this is the change of zoning, it did go out to the planning board first. They did approve it and send it down to the ordinance committee with the favorable recommendation. Our committee also went over it. Basically, it allows restricted businesses in a B1 by special permit, and the special permit only runs with the landowner, it doesn't run with the land. So should an individual be granted one of these special permits to be allowed to have an office business in a R2 district? When that person sells the property, the special permit expires, and it's not something that can get carried forward, you know what I mean? So I thought that was an extra unique, good protective restriction that the planning department had recommended, the planning board recommended, and the ordinance committee also recommends. So at this time, we're just ordering the public hearing, so we're making a motion to order the public hearing.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. Next item on the agenda is document, I can't see the number here. 35-13, Fountain of Salvation.
30.
Oh, 30. My eye is... Document 30-13, proposed amendment to zoning ordinance, section 5 billboards. This item came up from the ordinance committee to order a public hearing. Madam Chair, from the ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. Again, this did go through the planning board first, and it did come through the ordinance committee. The proposal is to allow billboards, and we just have had conversations on billboards in the not-too-distant past. This is a unique proposal insofar as it only would allow billboards on city-owned property and only allow billboards in a highway-access district, because as soon as they said on city-owned property, my first thought was, we're going to have a billboard on the common. But it's only for highway access. It's to allow the city to put billboards on the highway is really what they're trying to get at, as opposed to have something in the downtown area. Obviously, the motion tonight is to order the public hearing, but the one benefit of this would be Clear Channel owns the bulk of the billboards in the city already, and it would give us the opportunity to help remove, substantial removal, like 40, removal of 40 billboards inner-city to allow for one billboard on the highway, you know, something very substantial, where there's real benefit to the city in the inner-city, where people are looking at those terrible falling-down-paper billboards that we have no real control and no ability to get rid of. It did come up from ordinance committee with unanimous favorable recommendation to order that public hearing, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Right here, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yes, have it. Is that with all the lights?
This could be with the lights, which we don't want in the city. Oh, by the highway.
Lincoln Lights. Next item on the agenda is document 35-13, Fountain of Salvation Christian Church, 165 East Haver Street. Request permission to use the Campagnon Common Park on August 17 from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to hold an evangelist event. This item came up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair, from the ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. At the ordinance committee level, representative of the Fountain of Salvation Christian Church did appear, and they answered our questions with regard to noise restrictions, cleanup, and appropriate use of the common. And it did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to allow that group to use the Common Park on August 17 from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. to hold the evangelical event, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Right here, second?
Second, discussion.
Discussion. Counsel Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Chair, in the ordinance committee, we had made a request to change the time of the request from 4:00 to 8:00, to 2:00 to 9:00, to allow them set up and time to pick up afterwards, and I would like to suggest that friendly amendment.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. It's accepted.
Thank you.
Anybody, anybody else? This motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yes, have it. Next item on the agenda is 49-13, Semana Hispana in Lawrence. Request permission to use the Campagnon Common Park for yearly carnival, starting on Monday, May 6, with the setup to Sunday, May 12. Activity starts at the park, will open on Wednesday, May 8, and it goes through Friday, May 10, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And on Saturday, May 11, and Sunday, May 12, from 12:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. This item was submitted by Sada Asaldana, president of the Semana Hispana. Item came up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair, from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair, from the ordinance committee.
At the ordinance committee level, representatives from Semana Hispana did appear on two separate items, the first of which is this request to use the park for their yearly carnival, which is basically a fundraiser for Semana Hispana itself. Semana Hispana, to its credit, pays for their own police officers, and they raise the money to do that by having this pre-carnival, which I think we're all familiar with. There is some level of controversy as it is on the Common Park, which has been historically restored, you know, putting a lot of money into the park to prevent damage and renew maintenance, and then this is very heavy use, which seems kind of contrary to those repairs. Mr. Jim Barnes did appear before the ordinance committee encouraging us to consider alternative sites, and we did talk with this committee about that. He also was asking specifically if they did do this to request a cash deposit so that we wouldn't have to go through an insurance claim should there be damages, and the applicants did seem receptive to that. And then finally, he did specifically ask us to prohibit overnight sleeping. I guess some of the ride operators stay with their rides overnight, and that's problematic. So, I would ask if the motion does carry to please consider Mr. Barnes's additional caveats. But it came up, go ahead.
Point of information. Can you just delineate what those were again?
He wanted a substantial cash deposit to ensure that should there be damage to the park, that it would be fixed immediately without having to make a claim and go through insurance, but with the understanding that, let's say it was a ten thousand dollar deposit, and there's three thousand dollars worth of damage that we could document, the remaining seven thousand will be returned to the vendor upon completion of the work. It's not a slush fund or a windfall. And then similarly, it has a tendency to be overnight sleeping with the ride operator, sleeping with their rides, and that's not appropriate, clearly, and to not have that be. And the carnival people indicated that they would definitely prohibit that and make sure that that didn't happen again.
Is that just the trailers or?
Trailers.
Trailers.
Trailers, yeah, sleeping trailers, yeah. No sleeping trailers.
Madam Chair, anything?
He did, and just to clarify and in fairness to them, that there would be a security person that would remain constantly on the common with all, because of the nature of the equipment. So, there would be a person there overnight, but it wouldn't be sleeping trailers. I definitely, so the motion came up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to support this, and so I make that in the form of a motion for discussion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. I do think we need to take Mr. Barnes's request seriously to consider other alternatives. I support Semana Hispana, and I think using the common for Semana Hispana is somewhat controversial because of the repairs that we've been doing and trying to improve that park, but at the same time, the next motion, which is document number fifty thirteen, does allow a carnival a little later in the season when the ground's had a little more time to firm up, and I will be supporting that. I will be voting in favor of the festival. My one request back to this group is I'd be willing to close a street. Like, I think we should look at other alternatives that are good for them, could even make the festival better as opposed to minimize, like, but I just think saying it has to be on the common is short-sighted, and it's going to hurt the city long-term. And I really want to bring it back to the group to, for your full festival, that's what you're geared up for, it's just a few months away, of course, have it on the common. For next year, please, let's think about other alternatives besides just the common for those rides. I'd say let's close Jackson Street. Like, I want to accommodate you, but at the same time, I do think the concerns about the common are very real. But this first event is a fundraiser to get ready for it. Let's keep in mind, this first event is not Semana Hispana, and I really want to ask for the first event especially, would you consider other venues? I really want to put that back to you guys, because I think, this is what I'm saying.
You'll say?
Yeah.
Councilor Rivera.
I think that, because I was not, I apologize for that. Question of the cash deposit, is that, was a bond acceptable in that situation, or does?
No, I think he wanted a cash deposit.
And then, was he there? Was everybody present when they entered? Was that acceptable?
Members of council, I'm John Flynn.
Okay, but, so, so the question was whether or not the cash deposit was an acceptable, the two things that, I guess, Mr. Barnes asked about, were they acceptable by the, by the members present and all the people present?
I'm part of the ordinance, so, I mean, to me, sometimes, I understand we want to, our job is to protect city properties, but sometimes, I mean, is it constant, I'm not arguing if this is constitutional, what we're doing to this gentleman. He already showed up with a certificate of insurance, and on top of that, we want him to put another ten thousand dollars. I mean, legally, I mean, can we do something like this? I mean, I, I don't, I don't even know if we can do that to you. We would probably like to hear from the, from the city attorney just to protect us to make sure that we now, we already asked you for a certificate of insurance to make sure that you protect yourself and you protect the city. So, according to this, you're, you are protected for up to a million dollars.
Five million, sir.
Is that correct?
It's a total five million policy.
So, you're protected up to five million dollars. So, that protects you, it protects the city, up to five million dollars. And on top of that, we want you to take ten thousand dollars out of your pocket.
I believe at the meeting, we talked about five thousand.
Five thousand.
I thought that was it.
Even that. And at the same time, I want to grab five thousand from your pocket and put it in a separate account, just in case. I'm not sure why.
Mr. President, can I just, because I?
Sure. Councilor Rivera, go ahead.
But if he's okay with it, that we, we should just let, I mean, let him do it. I mean, if he's okay with it.
If I could give you some history on it. I went back over our records, and if you remember one year, and excuse me, I have a very bad cold, but we had one year where Semana Hispana basically was almost rained out. When the equipment moved out, obviously because it was so wet, there were some ruts and everything else, and at that time, I think it was five hundred and sixty dollars that we paid the city to repair it. Last year, there were, we did get some weather, and there were a couple of ruts. Last year, it was five hundred dollars that we paid the city immediately to do those repairs. If you request the five thousand dollars from me, that's no problem at all. We'll go ahead and do that in cash or check, you know, whatever, you could hold that. But the most damage that it's ever been done on the, on the property was five hundred and fifty, and obviously, I went to the D P W and said, you have your own people to take care of that. If you want, I'll have my people come in, but I prefer that your people do it to your specifications, and left it in their hands, and they did it, and we paid them immediately.
So, I think that because, thank you, Mr. President, because this thing is oftentimes controversial when it really shouldn't be, I think if he's willing to do that, I think we should take that into case. I think if they're willing to, to keep the trailers off the park, we should do that. But I totally, I do think that this becomes only a problem because these organizations, these cultural organizations have to do these crazy things to raise money for these things, we, for these events, and it shouldn't be the case. We should behind these organizations, be behind these organizations as a city to help them raise money year-round so that they don't have to do these things. This is only, we're only doing this, trust me, as a kid, rides have always been a part of Hispanic Week. I remember going there, so they should be rides too, but there's also rides during, during the Feast of the Three Saints. So, there's a level of what rides you can do with it. So, I would suggest that we need to do a better job as a community supporting these organizations so they don't have to go to such extremes to raise money, but, but let's do whatever mediation we can do. If, if, I'd like to do a friendly amendment to add the cash deposit and the overnight sleep trailer, and then just get past this so we can get this, this, the fundraising done for the pre-carnival and also have it done during the Semana Hispana. It's a beginning, baby steps. Let's do this little by little, and, you know, not everybody's going to be happy every time. I think there is an option to shut down Jackson Street, and if it has to be shut down for the week and, or a couple, even seven, eight days to put all the rides out there, we can do that. That's what we can choose to, as a municipality. They shut down, what's that road, the road on, in Boston, that Soldiers' Field Road, they shut it down every Sunday. That's a bigger thoroughfare than Jackson Street is, so if we decide this, this cultural event is important, which we do, we just shut the street down for ten days, and, you know, we've talked with the residents, there's not many people that live on that street to begin with, and we'll figure it out. But that, I think, is a solution like Councilor Burnell said for a different day. I think if we take both things that were asked of, they're okay with it, it seems like we can get this passed and done tonight, and we can move along.
Madam Chair, what was the, the whole motion? Wasn't that part of the motion, moving the trailers? Because I know we voted on a motion, having the trailer. He promised us he was going to have the trailers out. Wasn't that part of the motion?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
What it came up from subcommittee, I don't have the exact thing in front of me, so I apologize. Thank you, Clark. It was a contribution plus insurance to cover the damages plus no trailer, so.
Yeah, that was part of the motion already.
Can you just make sure that that gets part of, the no trailers isn't on there, but I want to make sure that it gets on there.
Because I know, I remember that was part of the motion. We made the motion down at the subcommittee level.
Yeah.
So, those were the three caveats. One was the insurance.
I withdraw. I withdraw. But I, I would like to support the motion as, as well.
But if we can make, the no trailers has to get on there. I guess that's the big.
Just make sure that the trailers are gone, please, because I know last year, you told us that they were going to be removed, and they weren't.
Was there, was there any consideration given to using Pemberton Park for these, just the carnival itself? Because there's a whole month difference between when the carnival is here and when actually Semana Hispana spots.
Madam Chair, you want to, I mean, if you want me to respond, I can't.
Go ahead, please, yeah.
Well, that, that conversation took place at the ordinance committee, not only just our location. We looked at the stadium and, and the other side of, of the, of the city.
Playstead.
We looked at the playstead. We looked at, there was a bunch of different locations that they looked at, but it looked, it sounds like this is the location where most beneficial to, to the festival. They attract more people here, people that wouldn't walk in distance from the park. I guess there was one year, if I, I'm trying to remember everything you said. Last year, a few years ago, when they had Pemberton Park, the attendance wasn't as, as good as it should be, so they decided to bring it back to the park, and it was very successful.
But what I'm also thinking about is with the work that's being done in the, in the common terminally, are there going to be restrictions down the road when these things will not be allowed?
I mean, the part of the question from down the road, I mean, we.
Based on, based on the fact that where this money's coming from the federal government to repair the park.
The repairs that's going on in this, in the park right now are, what they're doing is putting L E Ds, lights, and then they fixing the play area where the kids play. Those are where all the, actually, that's where the major work is going, running that location, which is way, when you're talking, good distance where the ride's going to be from where the actual work is being done. So, the work, most of the work that's being done is actually in the playground.
Okay, so none of the work, none of the work is going to be spread over this way? I mean, it's not programmed to come over.
It's going to be in the same place where it's always been. It's not going to, it hasn't changed. I mean, personally, it's been there for thirty-five years, I believe. You guys have been doing it for thirty-five years.
That's fair.
It has become an issue over the last couple of years. I remember last year, we took, it took us almost an hour and a half debating Semana Hispana.
Council President, just with all due respect, in the last couple of years, was one we've invested all the money in the common. That's why it's an issue. It's nothing to do with the festival, but if we're investing all this historical restoration money into the common, is that appropriate to keep having these heavy uses? So, the festival has been going on for thirty years, and it's a fantastic festival, and we talked about all the locations that that's been at. It hasn't been on the Common Park for thirty-five years, so let us also not confuse that issue. It has been on the Common Park for probably the last dozen years, and that's a nice thing, but in the last few years, we've gotten these federal grants to fix up the common. It is inconsistent with what we're doing. I want the festival. I want to support them. We closed down Common Street for five days.
Excuse me, Councilor Burnell.
Yeah.
The festival has been at that common for thirty-five years. It's never been anywhere else. The carnival, the carnival that they do in May.
Yeah.
Has been at that common for fifteen years?
Fourteen.
Fourteen years.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, about a dozen, yeah.
But the festival, Hispanic Week Festival, that's been at the common.
And that's the thing, I want to keep your festival on the common. That's not the goal. My goal is, let's get the rides as close to the common as we possibly can without physically putting them on top of the common. One of the gentlemen that spoke very early this evening was talking about possibly building a pavilion at some point. Now, we have a ball field that's dried out and gross, that really is not an appropriate use of the common to begin with. Maybe put something in that area. We want to accommodate you, like, but I think long-term, the solution isn't to keep having this debate every year. It's to come up with a genuine solution, and I'm, close down Lawrence Street, close down Jackson Street, close the street. I'd rather put the rides out in a street and have a street closed for a week to accommodate you than to keep having this exact debate over and over when we know we are damaging the common. Like, let's call a spade a spade. We're damaging the common. We know that that's happening. I don't want to impact your festival. I want you there. I, I like the other stuff that you do. We have the Bread and Roses out there. We have a lot of other festivals out there, and they go very well, but there's got to be a way that we can do both and have these heavy rides, and maybe it is building some infrastructure into the common. Maybe that's the solution. Or maybe the solution is closing down a street, but to come every, whatever it is, march and have the same debate, it's not fair to you guys either. You know, I, I'm not trying to put you in that position year after year. That's not my goal. My goal is for you guys to have a successful festival and to have us maintain our common at the same time, and I don't think those two things have to be mutually exclusive. I want to support your festival. I want to be really clear on that, but putting rides on a wet common in May, I don't know if that's the best thing when, we know the ground's super soft still in that time. So, I, I'm just trying to come up with a solution that works for the whole city, including you guys, like, I, this.
Councilor Vasquez, you want to say?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. I know that I'm, we're talking about, first and foremost, I appreciate all the work that Semana Hispana has done as long as Fiesta Show to put this fabulous event every year. You know, they have been very, very flexible with us as the city. You know, they have been, every year, they have been giving more and more to make sure that this is successful, whether it is allowing less people to come in into the park, you know, the permits that they provide to the, to the members of the committees and all the vendors that come in, because they bring vendors from, you know, as far as Arkansas. We had people from Arizona in the past. I know people that has come from Florida, New York, New Jersey, you know, and I could keep going down the list. There's people that are coming from very far, and accommodation for them is extremely difficult, and as a result of that, Semana Hispana has been trying to accommodate not just them, but also the city, and, you know, flexibility in their part has been great. Similar to what our council president brought up earlier, and I appreciate Mr. Flynn for, you know, saying that he's willing to, you know, put the five thousand dollars up front, but I think that this is something that, that if it's going to become the norm with one festival, it should be the norm with every festival that happens in the city. We should not, anyone that utilizes the park, whether it is bringing in any trucks.
I think you put a weight, weight restriction. If you're bringing in a vehicle of X weight, then you put down the money. I absolutely agree with that, but if you're having Bread and Roses and there's nothing of that caliber of weight, no.
I've seen, I've seen trucks in the park when there's other festivals, not just Semana Hispana.
So, when they do Earth Day, we'll ask for five thousand dollars?
No, Earth Day is not a festival. It is very different.
Okay.
In this case, we have talked about Bread and Roses. Bread and Roses has broad, school buses that are parked in the park.
On the grass.
Yeah, on the grass. I have also seen, I'm not going to mention the pharmacy's name, but a pharmacy van has been there doing certain, you know, services for the community, and it is parked on the grass. There's other trucks that have been parked on the grass, so I think that anyone who brings it, any truck, whatever truck it is, we should request from them the same thing that we are requesting for any other organization. I think that it, it should be all across the same, and Bread and Roses had utilized trucks before because I have seen it. School buses have been parked there. A, a particular pharmacy has parked there. Others that I don't recall specifically who they are have also parked there, and, and I think just to be fair, all across the board, we should make it the norm for everyone, and I appreciate Mr. Flynn for being upfront and saying, I am willing to do it because they're willing to collaborate and work with us to make it happen, and, and to me, that speaks volume, but it should be everyone, and I'm supporting this motion as it is today because the organization feel that it is also serving their best interest, and if it's serving the best interests of the organization, it is serving the best interest of our citizens, which are the one that have some entertainment over the, you know, the, the summer months, that have something to bring their families to, that are, you know, learning about culture and, and engaging in activities throughout the summer, and that I appreciate, but I think that it should be equal for everyone. I appreciate it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Chair, Councilor Burnell.
I agree with Council Vasquez, who said that we have to be fair and equal, and, and I do think, though, I, I would say anyone bringing in those kind of rides should absolutely do think, though, I would say anyone bringing in those kind of rides should absolutely be putting down that kind of money. If we're thinking that buses are gonna be equally damaging, then let's talk about buses too. I agree with you. I think that's a really valid point. We have to be fair and equal, but a medical van that's got a van that's doing community service, you know, I don't think that's quite the same. And obviously, that's a debate for another day, but I agree with you. I think we need to be more even-handed, and if bringing vehicles of a certain weight and size and nature, they should be putting down that kind of money. I think that's a good point.
Definitely. Council Rivera?
Yeah, I just wanna-
I'll call the question after.
I'm sorry, I just wanna go back to the crucial point about this. There are cultural organizations in these cities that we think are very important. Hispanic Week, Casa Americana, the Batuteras, and they are out there scratching and crawling for money on their own. It just shouldn't be the case. We should have the premier Hispanic Festival in New England. You go to, people go to Big E because it's the New England Eastern States Exhibition. It's great. Everybody goes there. There's no other as big as our festival. We can compete with Boston, and we can get people, families, to come here and make this a world-class thing. But we, as a community, have to stand behind these organizations. We can't have organizations doing bake sales to run hundred thousand, two-hundred thousand dollar events. We can't have organizations doing radio marathons to pay for citizenship classes. It's just, that is, we should, as a community, say, "These things are important to us. We should stand with them and help them raise money on a large scale." And what ends up happening when you're trying to do it on a small scale is things like this. So, you know, I hope that when we know that this discussion doesn't end just with this debate. I think, I hear Council Bernal has got a great point. We should convene right after this and say, "Hey, what are we gonna do next year, and what makes the most sense? And what can we do to raise money along the way, so we can maybe have a little couple less rides, but at the same time still have the rides and do something different, so that everybody knows that we're trying to do the same thing?" This is leadership that we can all take and go and help these communities, because it's just, this is not just, I mean, all the organizations need our help, and in solving that problem, you solve these problems. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council LaPlante, I know he wants to. Council LaPlante hasn't spoken yet.
Sure. You know, I shouldn't have to feel this way, but I do feel concerned about even speaking out on this, because when you end up speaking out on a matter like this, if you end up voting for it, then you immediately cast as being someone who is anti-Latino, anti-Hispanic, and it's a very tough position to, if you have any kind of opposition, to speak out, because you realize there's people out there just waiting to pounce on that thing. See, I told you all along, that guy didn't like us, was in favor of us. He wants to put us down, whatever the arguments are. And that's a reality in our city right now that I'm cognizant of, of that, the fact that there are individuals or there's this potential sentiment out there looking to find that chink in the armor to try to say, "Yeah, he's, you know, I told you that." So, having said that, and I do want there to be a successful festival. I have been and continue to be supportive of it. This is not the first time we've had this debate. Someone else has already mentioned it. We've gone through this at least three years now. This is not the first time that there's been a request about this ever, and we knew, we knew, two, a year and a half ago, there was going to be monies for this common. We knew that, and at that time, we said, at that time, we said, "We need to find a different location. We need to find a different spot for this." This is not a new argument or a new discussion point, but yet, we continue to essentially put that argument aside, and I will say to you tonight, we will vote in favor of this tonight, and next year, we'll have the same discussion, because nothing will change. There's not gonna be anything on Jackson or Common Street or anyplace else. We're gonna continue to have this discussion. Nothing is going to change. Counselor, to my right, left here is very right, we need to be fair and even-handed, whether it's the Feast of the Three Saints, whether it's the Bread and Roses, whether it's Hispana Hispana, whatever the festival is, we need to be even-handed about how we deal with things, because people are watching, rightly so, how we deal with those things, and we need to be fair and equitable and just in how we deal with things. Now, we're getting a lot of money. We're getting a lot of money from the feds to make our common look good. A common that I might say is utilized primarily by the very people that were looking, and the very cultures we're trying to celebrate in the city. This is a common that is utilized by most of the city, and it's no secret that we're seventy percent Hispanic city. No secret. And so, most of the people using that, by the very math of it, are Latinos and Hispanics. So, we, for the sake of our entire city, including those whose cultures we're looking to celebrate through this festival, the common is the place where we're trying to build it up, so everybody can enjoy it. So you can have your dominoes games. Your kids can go out and have some, a good time at the playground. So you can have the performances on the music thing. So all these things can happen, so that the ministers can go ahead and do their, do the preaching, whatever they're doing. All these things that are happening on our common, and we should enjoy that. But at some point, we have to say, "When are we going, now we're getting the money. When are we gonna say, 'Let's have a successful festival,' and have a festival on the common, but not the carnival rides?" I'm gonna repeat it, because I know I'm gonna get attacked by my vote this evening on this, so I just wanna explain myself before I vote. So, the idea here is, let's have the festival. Just let's not have the carnival rides on the common. Let's close out a street. Let, I know this is gonna pass tonight, and I know there's people here that are gonna say, "No way. We're, you know, we're gonna continue to have it on the common," but let's be open about that possibility, and there'll still be money raised. There's not gonna be a lessened amount of money. It is about the money. Part of it, isn't it, the first part of it, is to pay for stuff, right? That money will still be there if you close down a street for a few days, like we do for some of the other festivals. It can happen. So, I'm almost pleading, but I just, you know, I, good luck on the festival this year, and I mean that through you, Council President. I hope it's the best that you've ever had. I just wish the, I am not gonna support whether it's the Bread and Roses, whether it's the Feast of the Three Saints, or anything else that has any kind of heavy rides on the common. And the question regarding vehicles is a good one, and I'd be interested in hearing what Mr. Barnes, he's the one getting the money in DPW, say about the vehicles. If they're telling me that's gonna do damage on it, I'm with you. Let's find an alternative for that as well. So, anyway, good luck for your event. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? So, motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Roll call, please.
Council Vasquez.
Yes.
Council LaPlante.
No.
Council Tumi.
Yes.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Monte. Council Quino.
Yes.
Council Bernal.
No.
Council Vice President Rivera.
Yes.
And Council President Moran.
Table's yes. Motion carries. Next item in agenda is document fifty-thirteen, Semana Hispana in Lawrence, request permission to use the Campania Common Park for yearly festival from Monday, June tenth through Sunday, June sixteenth. The festival will start on Friday, June fourteenth, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Saturday, June fifteenth, from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And Sunday, June sixteenth, from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And the parade will start at 10:00 AM on Sunday, June sixteen, and leave Central Catholics Parking Lot at 12:00 PM. This item came up from the audience committee. Madam Chair from the audience.
Again, the Semana Hispana representatives and the people from, is it festival? I'm gonna say it wrong.
Yes, the show.
Thank you. Yes, the shows. Were at the audience committee level. They did make the presentation with regard to this event, which is related to the last document. Again, it's using Campania Common Park for their actual Semana Hispana festival, which is Monday the tenth through Sunday, the sixteenth. It did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation, and they make that in the form of a motion for purposes of discussion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Discussion, Council Bernal.
As I said before, for the pre-event, especially where the common was so wet, and I couldn't support that, and I was really hoping we'd consider a different venue, but be that as may, I do support Semana Hispana, and I will support you on the actual event with the rides on the common because of the notice. I really hope that we can work together over the next year to come up with a different location for those rides, but my goal is never to hurt your festival. And the other thing that came up at subcommittee that we didn't talk about, and I do wanna commend you, is last year, I don't know what you did, but you did something right, because you changed the noise somehow. We didn't hear it in Mount Vernon. I didn't get the calls that I used to get all the time, and I do wanna thank you for that. We really appreciate the work that you do. You do run a great event. It's world-class. It's terrific. I wish more, I hope more people do come down to it, but I do wanna commend you folks, because last year, we talked a lot about the noise. This year, we didn't even bring it up, because it wasn't an issue last year. Well, I don't know what you did, but please do that again, because it was really helpful. Thank you.
Anybody else?
They're using rides again.
Council LaPlante?
There're gonna be rides again.
Yeah.
Council Rivera?
Yeah, thank you. I would echo Council Bernal's comments. I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. It's, again, an unhandly, you know, for people who are doing it part-time and trying to put this world-class event together, which you guys end up doing. I am gonna take it as a personal challenge to try to come up with something that deals with these issues. Part of it is helping the fundraising side of it and coming together with you guys and figuring out a way to get big-dollar donations to this event. You know, people in this community feel this is a very important event. We should all get behind it. And the second part is, you know, making sure that people are talking about where to put these things, if not on the common, where are they gonna be, because it's not just on you guys to figure it out. It's on us, too. I mean, if we want you to do something different, we can't just wait you to, you know, to change, especially since there's nobody on your side that's full-time doing this. So, I'm taking it as a personal challenge to get this done, and we can get this done. We're not gonna be here having this discussion again next year. We have to get this done. We want this to be here seventy-five years, as far as I'm concerned, because this is a very important, I keep saying, this could be the New England Hispanic Festival event, and it could be a pride, something that we could hang our hat on, and there's no reason for it not to be. So, I'll be supporting it this evening, and soon thereafter, I'm gonna ask our colleagues at the table to come and join me in trying to figure out a solution to make this thing a better place.
Anybody else?
I'm in it.
One of the things that I think, if we're gonna do it for one, we should do it for all of them, for all the different organizations. Lawrence is a city of immigrants. I grew up with the St. Patrick's Parade. It's no longer available.
Absolutely.
We need to work with them, too. I just, I mean, I'm Hispanic, and I grew up with the Spanish festival, and I would do whatever it is. I contribute every year to your festival. You guys send me a little envelope, and I contribute to it, because I believe we need it. We need to start the festival here in the city of Lawrence. It's a city of immigrant, and I believe we should support every festival, and not just this one. I think next year, one of the challenges should be, bring the parade back, St. Patrick's Day Parade, too, as well.
Santa Parade.
So, those are things that we need to work together. I know it's very, it's very easy to say, "We're gonna do it," and we are. A lot of us will get involved, whether it's monetary-wise, whether organizational-wise, whatever it is, some of us will get involved. But I think we should look at every single festival, and I think your festival, to me, is one of the best in the city. It brings a lot of people into the city, people from outside of the community. It helps all the small businesses around the downtown area, helps and generate, makes it vibrant, helps and generate revenue. In those three days, the city of Lawrence probably generates, I'll say, anywhere probably over five million dollars worth of probably business in those three days, and that's what we want. We wanna attract business, and wanna attract people to our community for the right reasons, though.
Anybody else?
No, I just wanted to state, years ago, the police department was paid by the city, and one of the reasons we have to do fundraising now, because we have to pay $25,000 now to the police department. This is what they're charging us. So, Mr. Flynn was good enough to give us the carnival and used to help us up front, because that's one of our biggest expense, was the police department for $25,000, and it's a lot of money.
I understand that. I think that's probably one area where we should probably work together with the police department and the police union. Not sure how far we can get, but that's something, that's an avenue that we can research and sit with them and see what we can come up with.
Absolutely.
That's something that we need to look at. I know there was one festival, trying to remember, the lady just showed me the amount of money that she had to pay for one day to the police department. It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
Council LaPlante? So, there's a motion on the table. It's been second. We had a very great discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have a good luck, and we'll see. Oh, roll call.
Council Vice President Rivera.
Yes.
Council Bernal.
Yes.
Council Quino.
Yes.
Council Monte noted. Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Tumi.
Yes.
Council LaPlante. Council Vasquez.
Yes.
And Council President Moran.
Table's yes. Motion carries. Next item in agenda is document four.
Thank you.
Take care.
Next item in agenda is document four, twenty thirteen, Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Grant. In 2012, we were awarded $800,000 for twelve months. 2013, the award is for $344,000, which starts March first, 2013, to June thirtieth, 2013. This item was submitted by Art McCabe, manager of Community Development Department. Came up from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance.
This one was before the Budget and Finance Committee. It's a grant that was awarded, and they just need our permission to spend the money. Do that as a formal, it came up with a unanimous favorable recommendation. I do that as a formal motion.
Do I hear second? Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion. Council LaPlante?
I believe this is the grant where there were some individuals who were not good players, not good models, and had a contract of some sort with the DPW and got involved in whether it was a robbery or a spade of robberies. And I'd just like to get an explanation at the full council level from Mr. McCabe, who is in charge of this, and speak a little bit about this and give my constituents, because a lot of this happened in my district, some confidence that this program is working well, and that there's no reason to fear, or maybe there is, that this program does not have the kind of oversight and that we're getting some issues. So, could you speak to that, please?
Certainly. First of all, I just wanna correct one misstatement. They were working, we tried to set up a number of mentorships around the city, working with, in city parks, at the cemetery, assisting DPW, but they were not being paid by DPW, or they're not in DPW. They were overseen and paid out of the grant, so it wasn't a drain on the city's finances in that regard. And we had caseworkers and street workers that would check on these kids every day, young men every day. The purpose of the grant was set up last year. It targets what the state calls the proven risk youth. And now, these are the young men, fourteen to twenty-four, who pretty much dropped out of society. They're disengaged, they're unemployed, they're not in school. Most of them come from broken homes. Many of them are functionally homeless, surfing. They have a demonstrated history or involvement with a violent environment. This population exists, and in other cities in the country such as Chicago, New York City, Los Angeles, it's been demonstrated over and over again, that a very high percentage of violent crime is committed by a very small percentage of the population. So, the population is out there, and this grant is targeting those youth with the goal of, if you can stabilize that population or even reduce it to some extent, then you go a long way to addressing the overall issue of the city. There's a side issue on this. There's an economic development component of this, too. Many of these young men are unemployed. The city of Lawrence, the misperception about the city is that, you know, we're Dodge City. This demonstrates that we're addressing the issue. Now, I'd like to talk about the three young men you were talking about and others. We have over seventy of these young men that we're working with. Under the grant, we're permitted to actually work with the family environment. Many of them have unwed mothers and infants. In situations, there are siblings, single mothers. We can actually bring from resources, including counseling, training, education, to the environment to try to stabilize it. These three young men were actually doing very, very well in our program. You know, who knows what was going on that particular night, what prompted, you know, this bad judgment, whatever it was. But I can tell you that within a couple of days afterwards, some of the teachers that were teaching them at the Voke, some of the other people in the city that were working with the young men, you know, called to express regret, but support for the young men, and I'd be glad to show you, you know, some of those reports. One of the kids, the week of the event, of the incident, actually wrote a resolution, which is kind of gripping in terms of what he hoped for of his life and what he hoped for of his family. So, all I would say is, it demonstrates, one, we're dealing with the right population. Two, we have three or four young men that made a conspicuous bad judgment, but we have the overwhelming of the majority, overwhelming majority of the young men we're working with have demonstrated that they need a bridge back, and that they're willing to accept it, and have played, you know, have improved their lives by being involved with the program. You know, we have, I think we have as good a street worker and caseworker team as any city in the state. You know, we're out in the streets. We're providing mentorship to a lot of these young men. We have some female street workers that actually work with the families, as I mentioned before. After this incident, obviously, it was a high-profile incident, the state did a debriefing with us, too. Is there something we could have done better? Now, you always second-guess yourself with an incident like this, but the state was very satisfied that, one, these particular young men were making progress. There was no red flag in there about lack of supervision or whatever. Keep in mind, they come out of a bad environment. So, I'm confident that we are doing a very good job. I hope we can improve. We're gonna continue trying to improve. I think, last year was the first year of the grant. You know, we have a lot of lessons learned from last year in terms of how we administer it. We go to the specific areas, you know, we're working very closely with the police department and other community-based and faith-based organizations, but we're able to do some crime analysis where we can actually target the high-crime areas in the city and put our street workers in those areas, so we can, you know, be there to try to engage the youth and bring them back into society. Many of these young men this past year worked with community-based organizations. Some of them were working, we did a, up in Cronin Park, where we, the city got a number of, a large grant a couple of years ago. A group of these young men went up there, cleaned up Cronin Park. We had a welcoming back festival, neighborhood party, on a national light out last year. We've done that in some other parts in the city. There were some fundraisers for Kansas Society and some other not-for-profit organizations for a good cause. Some of our young men and women were involved in those operations. So, yes, we're dealing with the right population. You know, it's very regrettable, both for these young men and for the impression that people get from the program, because that's all they see. They don't see the fifty or sixty that are actually making good strides to come back. I wanna say one thing about why this is a four-month grant. Last year, the state initiated the grant, Governor Patrick, on a calendar-year basis. The state is trying to get this in sync with the fiscal year basis. So, the reason this is a four-year, a four-month grant is to get us to the end of the fiscal year, and then we'll go into a full-year grant for July first, 2013, to June thirtieth, 2014. I'd be glad to comment more if you'd like, but that's, you know, basically a response to your question, I
In the bigger picture, I guess, we have all these grants that we do, and my first question, is any of the gun buyback monies coming from this grant? That we're gonna get these gift cards?
No, we're raising, the gun buyback program, incidentally, is a byproduct of having this grant. Faith-based community, police department, community-based organizations have all come together to recognize we should have a gun buyback program in the city. We're raising the money for the program, for the gun- We're raising the money for the program, for the gun buyback portion of it, from private donors. So there's no money from this grant going into it. Our intervention team will be working on that data, one, before the day, doing, you know, public outreach and communication, particularly in some of the poorer neighborhoods in the city, and helping on that day, you know, the police department as they, as they implement the program. But there's no money going to the, to that program, other than our, you know, labor.
Do you have any data that you could submit to the council that could show the success of this program in other communities? Because we're not the only community that's had this.
No, I think there are, there are nine or ten cities in the Commonwealth that got it. I'm trying to think how you quantify change in, in behavior, change in attitude. You know, I can demonstrate within our city where there's been progress made. I prefer to do that in a, in a executive session, because we're gonna talk about individuals. But the state's very supportive of it. They, the state believes in it. Obviously, they've refunded it for this, this year. I don't know, I don't know what kind of data we would give you. I can tell you, we have a number of kids that have gone back to school with the Voke, actually, some in Northern Essex, some in Phoenix Academy, some in the alternative high school. So we, we've actually brought a number of the kids back into society. There is, there are some real tough nuts out there. You know, we're, we're dealing with them. We're not gonna give up on any of them. But I can honestly say the majority of the young men we're working with have demonstrated a desire for a better life. Whether they make it or not, who knows?
No, I, I get that. I just, at some point, at some level, whether it's, whether it's individuals from NGO, you know, non-government agencies, lobbying the US Congress and House and Senate for funding, and, or, you know, there's line items in the federal budget that has then, that has then shifted down to the state level, for the state level to administer grants. But at some level, someone had to make a compelling argument with data, saying, this is, this is a successful program. We're using public dollars, government money, to do this, and here's the accomplishments that we're able to achieve by the expenditures of these public dollars. And at some level, at some point, there has to be that kind of, that has to be that kind of calculus. So my question is, is can you find, I mean,
I think, I think,
let me just make my, my comment, which is, you know, we are very good oftentimes for getting grants in the city. And that's a credit, I guess, to many who are doing the applications. But I also don't want to get grants simply for the sake of getting grants, and that there needs to be some sort of, and I understand the rationale, I understand the reasoning, I, I get that. But what I want to find out is, how successful is it? Because somebody has to be accountable for that, and there needs to be measures of success that needs to be demonstrated. So the question here is, what are those measures of success? Is it somebody's smiling face? Are you saying that now they're working and they weren't working before? I mean, what, what is it that, that we can, that we can wrap onto and say, yeah, this is a successful program? Because sixty percent of the kids, I'm making some numbers up, who have some steady state of recidivism in crime are now, are now no longer in that cycle, and that now they are getting long-lasting, decent-paying jobs, developing families, or whatever your, whatever your, whatever your, your, your ratio or calculus is. But I, but I think that it would be important. I mean, you're asking me as a policymaker to accept a grant. And, and I hear the stories, but I need, can you flesh it out a little more? And I don't expect it tonight, and we're gonna have a vote on this tonight, and you're not gonna have it, I get it.
I can make a couple of quick comments, if you would.
Yeah.
Fortunately or unfortunately, we are not making public policy, or the public policy's been made at the state level, and there have been programs around, around the county that have done that. So for whatever reason, the governor and the legislature have said, this is a worthwhile effort. We just implement. So I, you know, I can make a number of arguments for or against the overall policy, but that's not our job. I can tell you one thing, when the, when the state issued the RFP for this grant, they, they told us, this is a very, very hard population. You know, they've been out of connection for a long, long time, and, and they, they told us, all the cities, if you have too high a success rate, we're gonna be very, very suspicious that you're not targeting the right population. So giving objective measures, frankly, a smile is one of, one of the measures we'd look for with some of these kids. But, and I don't mean that facetiously. I mean, you know, it's an attitude, it's a life, life value. I'd be glad to look out some of the legislative histories and, and some of the, you know, public research that's been done at the federal, on state level to support this kind of a program. But again, at a local level, we're just, we're just doing, grants offered, we qualified, and we're doing the best we can with it. So, but I'll, I'll be glad to look at it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it tonight, but in the future, I want to see some background on this. So be expecting those kinds of questions. Thank you, Counsel President.
Counsel Bernal?
I just was kind of following up on the, the comment that Counselor LaPlante was making, and I just had a suggestion. I think as a body, it would help us to know, again, I don't, maybe not for tonight, but if you're saying it's a four-year grant, a four-month grant, and becoming back for renewal in four months, is my understanding.
We'll be coming back.
Yeah. So maybe at that time, if you could just maybe outline the criteria of what qualifies a young person to be this proven risk. You know, what, what does that exactly, and then, young people who meet that proven risk criteria in a general population, X percent of them tend to get arrested in a two-year period, but in our group, only Y percent get rearrested. Or some quantifiable things?
Give you a quick response right now. I mean, the state, somewhat euphemistically, but accurately, describes the population as those most likely to kill or be killed.
Okay.
You know, it's the, it's the five to ten percent that have just, have, they've dropped out of other programs. One of the things we do with this program, we work closely with the police department, probation, House of Correction. We, we try to expand the capacity of the other service agencies, DYS, DCF, so that if their caseworkers have somebody, like, we've taken a lot of kids from DYS, you know, so when DYS ends, we take over. And, you know, the measures are, you know, recidivism is one, one measure of it. It's hard to gauge from year to year, but the population is those most likely to kill or be killed. Now, Lawrence, that's not a bright line.
But I just, if, you know, a little more of that detail, next, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Sure. No, I'd be glad to do that.
Counsel Vasquez?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is interesting to be listening to this conversation, and I think that Counsel LaPlante and also Counsel Bernal talks about, you know, data and whatnot, and I think it's important to, to differentiate qualitative versus quantitative data. And I think that this grant seems to go more towards the qualitative data. Because each case is very individualized. You know, from, from what I know of this particular grant and the individuals that are being served by it, have young adults who are, who might have been homeless, who might have dropped out of school, who are into drugs, who are, so it's very different. So it, it's difficult to have measurements of quantitative data to say, this is how many return to school, because that might not be the case, that all of the, the individuals need to return to school. There might be some that are already in school. There are some others that, that might have been homeless, some others that are teenage parents that have other issues that come about. So I think that quality of the, the grant speaks more than the quantitative of it. As to how many have done this, as to how much improvement happened within it. You know, but I just wanted to add two cents to that part of the conversation, because I think it's very interesting. I, I'm a data, I like data, so I think it's fun. But now, I had a specific question with, is it just for young men, or also young women are part?
Well, the, the target population is males fourteen to twenty-four, but, but one of the great attributes of the grant is, once you identify the male, you can then go to the, you know, the baby mama, the infant, the sibling, or whatever, and actually deal with, holistically with the family environment.
Okay.
So, and, and we're working with a lot of families. I mean, we've actually gotten some of these young men to go back and live with their families. I know we're making, having an effect on some of the teenage mothers and the infants. We're getting them connected with the health center and getting them resources that they haven't had the chance to access in the past, or didn't know how to access, or didn't have consistent access to. You know, so our caseworkers actually work with, with that population, too. You know, so we, we are dealing with a number of young women, infants, in addition to the target population.
So that is indirectly to the individuals that are serving based on the grant, is something that happens on the side?
Yes.
But I think that's great. All right, that was the only question I had. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else?
Mr. McCabe, just, just a quick question. It might, it might extend a little. So you're getting two hundred forty thousand dollars, then you're gonna allocate all this money to different organizations, correct?
The, that's the Shannon Grant. Under this grant, we're getting three hundred forty-four thousand for the, for the month.
I got ahead of that. Never mind. I'll ask that question on the next.
That's okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, go ahead.
Counsel Tumi?
Yes, just one question. The, I noticed that the, and this is why, Grant, you, you list, for instance, street workers, caseworkers, four full-time, five part-time, one part-time administrator. These people trained?
Second, I'm sorry.
How are they, how are they trained? They trained to go out and, are, are they people who have been in the problem, problem areas before and know it and go out and?
Both. In the, in the first year of operation, one, we, we relied a lot on UTEC in Lower, which is a, you know, has been an organization that deals with this population for a good, you know, twelve, thirteen years. We also had a number, we had a monthly workshop with the state, where all the cities would come together, and the state would provide training to us. One of the qualifications for the job, frankly, is knowing the community. So many of these, these young people have actually lived the life and are now coming back because they want to help others not live the life. You know, so, yeah, they get training, they get a lot of oversight, state's very supportive of it. With regard to the administrative, and one of the, we, we grew so quickly this year, you know, frankly, it was hard for us to keep up with all of the paperwork part. That's one of the reasons we're having an administrative, you know, data input person this year, and we're gonna have a web-based record-keeping system, so we're, we're not relying so much on the hard copy stuff.
Because I noticed here, on one of the, one of the elements here is Youth Build, which I find to be an extremely helpful avenue to, for young men to get in, to get into, to learn, learn a trade of some fashion. All right, thank you very much.
No, I just, a lot of these are UTEC, Youth Build, a lot of the organizations have particular focuses. You know, so we do a, we do a comprehensive intake when we, when we engage these young men or their, or their families, and try to create a trusting mentoring relationship with them, and try to pick out a right program for them. You know, so there is not, you know, one shoe fits all, all sizes. So we're dealing with a lot of them. Youth Build is a very, very good one, but they have a limited population.
Thank you.
I, I see the allocation. I'm, I'm gonna piggyback on Counsel Tumi, because it's gonna be the same question as the next, next grant. It seems, yeah, you earmarked twenty-one thousand dollars, two hundred eighty-one to Youth Build, eighty thousand dollars, four hundred seventeen to UTEC, three thousand three hundred and five to Groundwork Lawrence, and five thousand and five hundred and eight to Arlington Community Trabajando. What is their role on this?
Arlington Community Trabajando?
Yeah.
Or all, all of them?
Well, there's only one, there's only four here.
Well, we work,
First of all, the top.
Those are the ones we're intending to fund this year. This year, we're gonna actually pay some of these organizations on a per capita basis, so that if they take a young person in, we, we pay them on success. Since this, these figures were submitted, I've actually had a debriefing with the state. And some of the figures you have there are primarily the, the UTEC, but others, too, we're gonna slightly adjust. The overall grant's the same. And, and we work with a lot of unfunded partners, too. Lawrence Smith-Loon Community Coalition, Greater Lawrence Community Action Council, Hospital, Psychological Center. A lot of those have their own independent funding, and we're, we're collaborating with them. Our street team, you know, are all pretty much born, Lawrence-born and raised, you know, culturally competent, bilingual. And,
My only concern here is that I looked at four organizations. Out of the four, three of them are from Lawrence, and one of them is from out of the city of Lawrence, and that particular one is getting eighty thousand dollars.
They're, they're not gonna get that, since I've had the conversation with the state. I don't, they're gonna get a lesser amount, and the, the amount they don't get is gonna go back into the pool to deal directly with the population. So,
So who, who has the authority to say, I'm gonna earmark X amount of money to Youth Build?
Well, we, we, the city,
Who has that authority?
We develop a, a work plan, and, and then we present it to the, to the Health and Human Services and the Executive Office of Public Safety. Since that was submitted, I've, I've talked with the Health, Health and Human Services and EOPS about our work plan. Last year, UTEC was a very important component, particularly for training and because of their experience, and we were starting out scratch, for scratch. Since, when I met with the state agencies about it, they suggested that we can actually allocate more locally, which is fine, but I'd rather do that, frankly. So the state has to approve our work plan. We come up with the one tailored for Lawrence, but the state approves it, and then directs us, you know, how to set up the, the budget and the operating system.
So do you know the amount that is, that you're gonna distribute this year to this organization?
To Youth Build? I mean, to UTEC?
Yeah, Youth Build, UTEC, Groundwork Lawrence, and Arlington Community Trabajando.
Well, Groundwork Lawrence is developing a, a certificate landscape training program.
So what, what amount are they, are they getting this year?
Well, for the, for the four-month period, we're only gonna get about three or four thousand dollars as we prep.
Okay, so these numbers that you gave us are the correct numbers. Numbers here.
You have the four-month period?
I have, for Groundwork Lawrence, three thousand three hundred and five.
Yeah.
That's the right amount. And Youth Build, twenty-one thousand, two hundred eighty-one.
That's projected on them taking ten of our people into their program on a per capita basis. If they only take three in, then they get paid for three.
And UTEC, eighty thousand, four hundred seventeen.
UTEC, as we, as last year, we had, we gave them a consulting and training component. The state's told us we don't have to do that this year. So UTEC is also gonna be paid on a per capita basis. You know, if they take some of our young men, they get paid for the period that the, that the young men are in there. For certain, whatever reason, they don't, our young men don't stay in their program, then UTEC doesn't get paid for that month. We, we get reports, and we, we allocate on a, on a monthly basis.
Now, these kids, they get paid, or they get a service of?
A couple of different ways to deal with it. The ones that we have actually in worker training, like the ones working in the park or the cemetery, or with some of the community-based organizations, they get paid a, a weekly salary. Some of them get incentives or stipends for going back to school and staying in school. For instance, with one of the schools that we deal with, you know, if, if the kid gets a stipend of, you know, seventy to a hundred dollars a week, they miss one day, it gets cut by a third. They miss two days, it gets cut by two-thirds, and they miss three days, they don't get paid at all. You know, so there's a, there's a stipend based upon performance and, and progress.
I, I understand the problem. I think it's, it's the best thing probably that we've seen in a long time here, especially around this area. Kids come out of jail, they don't know what to do, they can't get a job because of their criminal record. They need to survive. So what do they do? They go back to crime again. At least, this gives them an opportunity to transition into the world, you know, into probably something better. We hope that this program will work towards that. And I would love if you could come back with some of the data, you know, with some of the, the numbers that some of the council members ask of you. Whether, you know, give us a number of kids that we service that are participating in this program. How do they do? I'm not sure if you rate them based on, do you evaluate them at all?
We, we have an ongoing evaluation of all of them. As I say, we do an intake, we do a, a, a work plan, a case management plan, and then we evaluate it as we go along and, you know.
It's always good to know whether this is working or not. I mean, this is good for a city like ours to, you know, give these kids some employ, some, some work, and actually get paid for it.
Just one little aside on that. Some of the young men that we've taken in are actually working with our street team, male and female, and talking in the school and mentoring some of the middle school kids that are, you know, right on the cusp. You know, so some of the young men that we, we've worked with are actually already giving back, under supervision, but there's some indications it works.
Fair enough. Anybody else? There's a motion, a motion on the table. It's been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item and agenda is document five, twenty thirteen, Shannon Grant. Twenty twelve, it was awarded, got awarded a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, and twenty thirteen, two hundred forty thousand dollars. This item came out from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee came up to the full council with a favorable recommendation, and I do that as a formal motion.
So I hear second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is withdrawn. Document eighteen.
I was gonna use my committee.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. So, I voted this evening, it seems like a long time ago.
I need a motion for, you need to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
What's the rule, what's, what are you voting on? To suspend the rules for what?
To suspend the rules.
Just to, to suspend the rules, have a discussion or debate, or for the actual item?
For the actual item. That's what you want it. Isn't that what you want it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if anybody had any questions regarding that. Okay.
Nope. Well, you already explained it for us.
On the motion, suspend the rules. Counsel Vasquez?
Do you, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Mr. Clerk, or Counselor LaPlante? Is the motion to get, to suspend the rule just to be able to discuss what you want? Or are we suspending the rule from?
The motion you made, the motion you made, Counsel Vasquez, was to suspend the rules and move the item from the committee.
Okay, so to move from the committee to here. Okay, so to move it from the committee to here.
Counsel Vasquez.
No.
Counsel LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Tumi.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
No.
Counsel Almonte noted. Counsel Aquino.
No.
Counsel Bernal.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Rivera.
No.
And Counsel President.
Chair votes no, motion fails. Next item on the agenda, withdrawn, document eighteen dash thirteen, stop sign Amherst Street and Andover Street. Madam Chair, from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Counsel President. At the ordinance committee level, there was a motion to withdraw this document as the officer had recommended against inserting a stop sign at this location. State law requires cars to stop at a T intersection, and this is a T intersection, and the officer's encouraging us not to adopt stop signs at T intersections unless there's a series of accidents, and there was no history of accidents at this intersection in the last, I think it was the six-year study that he had done. So it came up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to withdraw the document and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice habit. Next item on the agenda, old business, document forty dash thirteen. Mr. Vice Chair, surplus declaration, one forty seven Havil Street, tax map, one oh seven lot six, real property with an area of approximately fifteen thousand zero four seven square feet, with a three-story wooden structure and a one-mansionary structure located in R two residential zoning district. It was charter objection by the vice chair. Just to give you an update, we got an email from Dan McCarthy, the land use planner today. He's requesting for us to withdraw this item from the agenda.
Point, just a point of order on that.
Sure.
Can we still vote it down? And then we'll give them three hundred sixty-five days the next time they can bring it up?
Absolutely. This is a city council, we can do anything we want.
Again, I know that that sounded really crass, I don't want to vote it down just for the sake of voting it down, just from...
You want to vote it down?
I would like to make, I would like to make the will of the council known, and then have them come back with it, you know, give it some more time. I think having them withdraw it. Again, I'm concerned about this being left open, and I'd really like for us to just have the will of the council heard.
Okay, I mean, I wanted to ask for a motion, but I think I'm going to handle this a little different. Counsel LaPlante, do you want it?
No, my motion's already on the table. It's already been, it's already out there. I mean, a motion's been made, it's been seconded, it's been amended by myself, and now it's a question, it was a charter objection before we had the vote.
You are right. You are correct, Counsel LaPlante.
Correct. So what was the?
The motion was to pass it.
The motion presented on March fifth, according to the docket, is by Counsel LaPlante, seconded by Counsel Almonte, to declare property surplus. Counsel LaPlante amending a motion to encourage planning discussions with the administration regarding proposed disposition, and to approve.
That was the motion.
Approve only the, again, approve the declaration of surplus.
No.
Okay. It's a motion, it was seconded. Any discussion?
Can you read?
Counsel LaPlante?
Could you please read that brief letter into the record?
Sure. Counsel President. We have a letter dated March nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, received and filed, clerk's office of four fifteen, by Dan McCarthy, the land use planner. Please withdraw the above document from consideration matters currently tabled as new business before the city council, which that second part is probably not accurate.
That's, that's all it says, just wants it withdrawn.
Should've said old business, but, you know.
Yeah, that's true. He's not here this evening, because that's a direct, an about-face, a one-eighty from what they were talking about just two weeks ago. They're very much forward of it, they want to go forward, and now, all of a sudden, they want it withdrawn, and there's no explanation as to why it's withdrawn, so I'm here scratching my head, saying, why do they want this withdrawn? There's no rationale for it. I mean, they made it in a passion discussion, sold me on it.
Personally, I think they made the right decision to leave it, to leave it for us, to utilize it, for, probably utilize it with something better than what they were trying to do. My personal opinion.
So, so if we withdraw this, again, just for the parliamentary side of this thing? So it's withdrawn.
City keeps on its ship.
Without prejudice.
If we vote it down, they can't bring it back for a year.
Unless we suspend the rules and allow it to go forward.
Correct.
Withdraw, that's a final, that's also a final disposition.
Correct.
So either way, here, it's a final disposition, you got to wait three sixty-five, either way. Unless you keep it tabled here, and then it, and then you don't, that, those are the options. And right now, the proposed surplus, so this is going, essentially, what I'm hearing is that this is going to be a white elephant on Havil Street, that we've got this Victorian building that the city owns, that nothing is happening to it. We may, senior center wants it, veterans wants it, we could probably put some housing in there potentially, because it's already zoned for housing, but now we're making a decision, apparently, that nothing is going to go on. We're going to leave that place, at least, it's withdrawn, so there's nothing, there's no surplus. What am I misunderstanding?
If it's a city-owned property, the city of Lawrence can utilize it for whatever they see a fit. They can sell it. They can utilize it whether it's for the senior center, they can utilize it whether it's to house, whether to move one of the departments into that building. It's not surplus, it's not declared surplus, it's still city-owned. So it's not that they can't use it, you can use it for whatever you want. We can utilize it for veteran service, probably grab the veteran service department downstairs, move them over to that location, and have them run a better veteran service department from there. I don't know, I'm just throwing, you know, hypothetical plans that they might have. Maybe the city center might want to use it for something else. Maybe they want to utilize, take all the administrative office from the actual senior center, move it into that house, and create more space, recreational space for the senior center. I don't know.
But what I, what I don't understand is, if, even if we pass this, I don't think there are any votes, even if we pass this tonight, they still can do that. They still can put the veteran service into senior center, it's only just declared surplus. It doesn't change, potentially, if that's the way that they're thinking.
Point of information.
It doesn't change if we're going forward.
We give them a, pretty much, it still has to come before the city council to be approved.
Not if it goes for intermunicipality, municipality, excuse me.
If we give them a, if we give them more ammunition to sell this property, that's what we, we actually, I tell them, okay, we're going to declare surplus, they can go out there now and send it out for RFP, that doesn't stop us from doing it. Now, that property has to come back to the city council for approval, but they, right now, once we declare surplus, they have the ability to send it out for RFP.
Sure.
Why do we want to do that?
Just point of information. I know, I know that... I was the one that charter objected this, because I think that maybe we forgot the reasons why we were kind of discussing it. There, it's not going to be a white elephant on Havil Street, it's going to be a property that, that we should take the leadership of redeveloping for a more productive use for services to our seniors or services to our veterans. I think that it is easy to look at and say, we can sell this and maybe put, sell this to somebody to put housing there. We already was being talked about not giving them any of the parking in the parking lot area of that, so that would make it, all these people would have to park on the street, there are very little parking available for that building. It's easy enough to say that we're going to put these things back on the tax roll, and that's going to be tax dollars backing in. Again, I say, if you're providing some service there, it's tax dollars that aren't being used to provide services some other way by using that as a service to citizens. We are taking away the ability for the, the real...
Real estate? Real property task force?
The real property task force to make any other decision except to use it for public good. That's all that we're, that's all that I was asking for. Not that we wanted to sit there like a blighted property for a bunch of years, but what we wanted to do is to be used for a better public good, and not for the real property task force to use it, to sell or to get gains from it.
If it's, if there's no objection, then I'm going to take the letter here, apparently by the administration, and honor their request, and I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I'm going to make a motion to withdraw.
Second.
Second. Counsel Bernal wants to...
Yeah, just through you, Counsel President, one thought. We could, Counsel LaPlante kind of alluded to the fact we could declare the surplus and still use it for city purposes, even though it's been declared surplus, we still own it and we could use it. We've seen in the past where there's properties that really weren't appropriate for RFP, I think in the one where Water Street becomes, was becoming, where it goes towards Methuen and River Street, the property out there that Mr. Dea had bid on. He spent a lot of money putting together drawings and plans and schematics, soil tests, plot plans, title searches, only to get to this level and be told, well, we don't think this is really a great use for the land because you're pushing too much into too small of a lot, and it just really isn't appropriate, and we maybe shouldn't have gone off of RFP this way to begin with. I think by declaring it surplus, when we really don't want it to be declared surplus, we're opening ourselves up to that kind of exposure, where some developer's going to go bid on it and bring in a proposal, and be really upset when we say, well, we really want to keep it for city purposes. So I think declaring it surplus with the thought that we could keep it on our rolls and just keep using it, just lends itself to really potentially bad outcomes, so I really would be against that. I know there's a motion right now to withdraw, but I actually really like the idea of just voting it down, because I think that sends the message that we don't support this, and I think I'm going to vote against the motion to withdraw, and then if that fails, I'd make a new motion to vote against it.
I thought the reason why they changed their mind is because they...
Realize it.
They realize this wasn't going anywhere.
Yeah.
You realize what? I'm sorry, can you hear you?
I say, the reason why I believe they made a motion, they wanted us to withdraw was because they knew this was going to die here. Be honest.
So, there's a motion on the table, was seconded. All those in favor say aye.
No.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Vice President Rivera.
Yes.
Counsel Bernal.
No.
Counsel Aquino.
Yes.
Counsel Almonte. Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Tumi.
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez.
Yes.
Counsel President Moran.
Chair votes yes.
So that, that actually, the city currently will continue to own that property?
City owns the property, yeah. Next item on the agenda, because the table matters. Anybody want to take it off the table? If not, I'll go to new business.
I do, I do.
You do?
I do.
Counsel LaPlante, which item you want to take off the table?
Uh, thank you. I am looking to take off the two twenty-six eleven, illegal dumping.
There's a motion to take document two twenty-six off the table. Do I hear second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The vice president, document two twenty-six dash eleven, illegal dumping home rule petition. Counsel LaPlante.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we again send this home rule petition back up to the state house with a favorable recommendation. Do I need any public hearings or anything on that?
It's a new, it was a, it was a, pretty much it was change.
It was modified, there's not a lot of changes on there. It was fairly minstrel. The one change was from ten thousand to five thousand, and the rest of it was the same.
Dollar amount should be sufficient enough.
Sufficient for a change? Make a motion that we order a public hearing on that document?
Second.
All those in favor to order a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice habit. Next item on the agenda, new business, document fifty-seven, taxing liberty licenses for twenty thirteen renewals. Item was submitted by Lieutenant Sean J. Conway, Lawrence Police Department.